I'd like to lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this over D, number just five forty for the order. And Clark, will you take all please?
Yes, Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Conutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lunt.
Here.
Ms. Hermes, present.
Steven Biggessam.
Here.
We have a oral committee.
Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
God, opposed, say nay. Agenda's approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to the Otter PTO for their donation to Lincoln School Kindergarten Playground, and Linda Sander for her clarinet donation to the band department. Could someone offer that resolution for adoption?
I'll offer the resolution.
I'll second that.
Ms. Lee, take all please?
Yes. Steven Biggessam.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Conutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lunt.
Yes.
Ms. Hermes.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. We will move on to our reports tonight, and we'll start with Kirby Anderson with the five forty four.
Okay, um, five forty four, um, we did have a February meeting, which I reported on last month. Um, there is no March meeting. Um, a couple of people are out of town, including the director. And so our next meeting will be Thursday, April eleventh at noon. Um, Finance Committee met March eighth at eleven a.m. Um, on Friday last week, and we reviewed the playground bids, which is on the agenda for tonight. We also went through a lot of the Lincoln Furniture detailed requests, um, and kind of tried to separate the things that are wanted and things that are needed to try and get the, get down to a closer to budget on that one, which was successful. Um, and we reviewed the concession stand proposals, and that's also on the agenda for tonight. Activities Committee, uh, we met on Thursday, the fifteenth of February at seven a.m. Uh, we went through the logo, again, that's on the agenda tonight. And we also covered some middle school sports and talked about fees and a whole lot. I don't know if there's anything else you can remember that was of significance, but I think those are the main things. Um, I'm gonna skip ahead and do a meet and confer. We met Tuesday, March twentieth at four fifteen. Talked about kindergarten through fourth grade is looking at possibly if they would like to be on a trimester. That's something to first to talk about. Um, e-learning in the elementary schools and the calendar, which I believe is on our work session tonight. And I think meet and confer is scheduled again for next week. I think Jeff, you had that in your weekly to talk about the school, finalize the school calendar and talk about e-learning. I don't know if you can make that or not. I've, I don't know what I'm gonna have this month. I'm on jury duty for three months.
Okay.
So excited, so excited. Couple other meetings that I'll just list, um, Principal's Negotiation. Um, we had two meetings, twenty eighth and also March sixth, and we discussed proposals, and we have a closed session later, so we'll cover that then. So that's the extent of my report.
Okay. All right, any questions for Kirby? All right, thank you. Melanie Cole.
All right, so Kirby covered meet and confer, since I couldn't make the last one. Um, Region One did not meet. Special Ed Co-op had a meeting today. The agenda was, um, uh, accepting a lot of personnel maneuvers, and that was, that was the gist of it. Um, thirteen staff left the Special Ed Co-op to come to our district for, um, special, in-house Special Ed starting next year. Um, both of the Teachers of the Day Treatment Program had their contracts terminated, whereas the director thought they did a nice job. Neither one was licensed in that area, so she's, so she terminated their positions so that we could, uh, open it up again, potentially get staff that has that licensure. And, um, then each meeting, uh, since we have, um, voted as a district to leave the Special Education Cooperative, they've had a work session after the business portion of the meeting, which I don't stay for since it's planning after, for after when we're gone. And so that has been ongoing, but they have been quantifying and reorganizing administrative duties. It, that's something that they generally, um, acknowledge today. So, uh, that's about it from Special Ed Co-op, and that's all we have.
Any questions for Melanie? All right, thanks. Ms. Lee.
Okay, um, the curriculum, District Curriculum Review Advisory Committee met on February twentieth, and it was a very gratifying meeting. It was so good, and I think, I hope everybody feels good after hearing about what happened. So what we had was Ethan Johnson, um, the language arts teacher at the ALC, reported on for the different pieces of curriculum that we adopted last year. And I, it was amazing really to see in just one year the, um, the things that have happened for, um, especially in the elementary, but also in the other grades as well. So they talked about, um, the sheet, um, they had different samples for us to see, um, comparing, um, the beginning of the year versus February. And it was astounding the, the things that we have approved, so including the UFLI, the University of Florida Literacy, and then also the No Red Ink, and then Reading Plus, and, um, I'm trying to think of the other one. Well, anyway, um, it was just super gratifying to see that something that teachers asked for and that we approved is really doing what it's meant to do. The changes and, um, advances for young people, um, in our district were really super. And then we had also, um, that's, I think that's. That was pretty great. Any questions on that? I know I didn't really, I thought, oh, the P E and Health Review. We just, um, just got a handout, and we'll be looking at that more coming up, P E and Health. I can pass this around if you'd like to see. This one is especially, um, amazing to me, the, the change in that child studying the phonics, the UFLI, and then, um, what's the other one?
Harry. Henry.
Yeah.
What is it?
Haggerty.
Haggerty, yes. And she described how the teachers are using it, and, oh, this is so super. It's just so wonderful to hear, um, from our curriculum director. Okay, that's that. Um, Policy Committee, the policies you'll see coming up later on. And, um, I'm not sure if we can actually vote on them tonight. We have to have a second reading, since we're not invoking, um, Policy one oh eight, since it's not that critical.
Since our outline was sent, since it review, they're not official, then we can approve them.
We can?
Yes.
Super. So the Policy Committee met on, um, February twenty third, and we hadn't met in a while, so it was great to have the whole gang back together. And, um, except for one policy, there were eight policy updates that are a result from legislative action, and that needed to be maybe the rewording. So Policy two oh six that you see here clarifies the rules for public comment at schools, and specifies the public comment will take place, um, after the meeting and before a work session. Policy four ten aligns our policy with the state statute that went into effect on January first of this year. Policy four thirteen on harassment and violence aligns our definitions in our, um, school handbook with that of the Minnesota Human Rights Act of two, two, twenty, twenty-three. Policy four sixteen represents the policy with the most significant change as it relates to the legalization of cannabis in the state. And so it clarifies policy, especially regarding testing of employees, which we do not do, but it clarifies that. Um, Policy five oh six on student discipline has minor revisions of language and explains uses of exclusionary, exclusionary discipline. And Policy five oh seven on corporal punishment and prone restraint clarifies the policy that had been kind of a flashpoint in other communities, not ours, but regarding RSOs. And that policy now includes guidance from the Attorney General, which that was interesting to see. Policy five one five update student privacy. And Policy six twenty, um, is a credit for learning, simply adds the state, um, to the, adds the state to the wording so that the cross-reference is available, state statute.
What was on there before six twenty?
Six, five fifteen.
Wait, that's not on our list, is it?
What is five fifteen?
Which is five oh six?
Can I say your book?
Just. I just go from five oh six to six twenty.
Never mind.
No five fifteen.
Oh, now they're here. Okay, maybe next time.
We did skip around a little bit.
We did.
Yeah.
Never mind, no five fifteen.
Yeah, that was protection practice of your records.
Yeah.
And we didn't do that one.
We didn't?
I think we did.
I think ours was fine. The policy from the state, or at least the guidance, ours was okay the way it was. Yeah. Okay. Sorry for the confusion.
Mm-hmm, it's okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Lee? All right, thanks. Okay, um, next is my report, and, um, Buildings and Grounds has not formally met since our last meeting. However, there just continues to be movement, um, the various, uh, buildings and just a couple of high-level pieces. Um, Lincoln School, did you say seventy-five percent sheet rock now? So we're starting to see, see the layout and the progress there. Um, we'll be approving the playground for Lincoln School tonight. And then, um, our Gold Gym floor is gonna be refinished with the new logo this summer sometime. So that'll be something to look forward to as well. Highlights there. Um, and then the Wellness Committee meeting, I wasn't able to attend, so I'm reading off of Jen's notes. So Karen Nitskorski from Partnership for Health was there again, um, asking us to consider developing a wellness vision statement. So she did provide some ideas and some samples again, so that might be a project on our radar for next fall. And there was also some discussion about tobacco procedures and what kind of options our students have and what kind of resources they're given for trying to quit and kind of redirect. And then Trooper Sergeant Jesse Grabo from the State Patrol was at the meeting, um, talking about just impact teenage drivers. His target, or his idea was to get in the classrooms. His target is tenth grade, tenth grade students or students, because students are waiting longer to get their driver's license. And, um, they're thinking, well, they don't have to take the test if they wait until they're eighteen. So they wanna just get information out in front of students, um, so that it just, it's a safer, safe, safe information are out to students. So typically it comes in two parts, like what do you consider lethal, um, living in a dream world, making responsible decisions, and those types of things. So it looks like maybe there will be some connection with Mark to implement this during Otter time. And then there was some conversation, the senior yard signs have kicked off. Um, so the five forty four Education Foundation is hosting the, the platform for, um, senior families to purchase those yard signs. So marketing has gone out to the parents, and it's on Facebook, and it sounds like there's some posters up around the school.
I had a quick question about that.
Yeah.
So my son's a senior, we've had a sign, I think that was the first one.
Yeah, you were.
Because they didn't, but, um, they had, they, they gave you an option for a picture or not a picture. Where are they getting the picture from? Because there wasn't a spot for me to upload it. I forgot to ask you about that.
So the photo will be taken from whatever was submitted for the yearbook.
Okay, that's kind of what I assumed, I just wasn't sure.
Yep, yep. And those kids that don't want a picture will have a logo in its place.
I like that because it's one less thing you have to provide.
Yeah.
There's just so much going on for seniors, so it's great.
And then Lance spoke from Food Service, um, just continuing to discuss the vending machine contracts. Um, the Summer Meal Program is gonna be located at Cleveland. First Monday after school is out until the first week in August. And then, yeah, our Wellness Team doesn't meet until next fall, September twenty-fourth, next fall. All right, so.
Where would, where does a wellness vision statement go? Or who, who's gonna see that? Where does it print it? Is it, like, just in the student handbook?
I think it'd probably be more of a formality if the Wellness, the worksite Wellness Team, like, grew a little bit more and became more of a presence. Something that would kind of support that.
And I'm also working to make a Wellness page on our, um, our, um.
Footage?
Footage. I don't know, I'm still a little right now too. I know Jen has information internally, like, you know, medical, nursing type.
I have a question about Jesse Grabo. He wants to come in to the classes, seminars, and talk about driving.
Yeah, basically positive decision-making. So it's another, um, this could be considered like an offshoot when, uh, I don't know if they do this anymore, when they were having a lot of car crashes and stuff to discourage drinking and driving and other distracted behavior around proms and graduation. Uh, but this is a new outreach program that the State, State Patrol has developed, and he's wanting to get out to see sophomores to go over the content.
So it hasn't been done anywhere yet? It's one of the.
Well, it's fairly new is my understanding.
And it's the same theme then, to talk about, um, decision-making? Or what's the connection to the eighteen-year-olds and license issues? Have you, you know that?
I, I thought that that was more of just a, an aside comment, that many students are just waiting to get their driver's licenses now.
Okay.
And that the, the program had more to do with, um, not drinking and driving, um, not texting and driving, you know, the restrictions on your driver's license when you first get it, where you're not supposed to be transporting more than X number of people and.
Well, isn't that all covered in driver's ed anyway?
But they're not taking driver's ed, that's about the connection.
That's the thing, they're not taking it.
Wait until they're eighteen.
Well, how much does it cost driver's ed?
Three fifty.
Yeah.
Or three and a quarter.
I don't think it's just, I wanna wait and I'm not gonna have to take a test. There's a definite expense to taking driver's ed.
Although there are students that do decide they don't, for whatever reason, don't wanna drive until they're younger. So they don't have, they either have friends or they have family that drive them, so they feel like, I don't need a car to drive myself around.
You don't have to take driver's ed if you're eighteen.
No, which one?
Test.
Tests, and then driving. So it's not just for those that are waiting, it's to, just to try and catch all the sophomores. But we also have, not a lot, but we do have a percentage of our sopho, or our ninth graders that will be getting their licenses this year, because there were, there have been kids that were held back by their parents, and there were kids that were held back for kindergarten. And now they're in ninth grade, and they're gonna be driving next year when they're tenth grade, so. So that might be something to circle back with Jesse on and say that, to maybe focus on some of those kids that, that are turning sixteen this year in ninth grade, because it's not just sophomores.
For sure. Any question, any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to that one key.
Um, most high school we have not met, so I have nothing to, like, since last.
And then Steven Biggessam.
Uh, yeah, so the Staff Development Committee met, and we had, they had just, uh, done the Staff Development Day, and, uh, one of the big things is they had a, um, had an exit poll survey with the, the staff that was there. And it was a day old, so it wasn't, they haven't had a chance to digest the, the information yet. But, um, overall, the, um, people really liked the training. Phyllis Braxton came in to talk about cultural competency, and, um, she was actually late. She ended up having a migraine and ended up being super late for the training, but yet even with her being late, they still thought her, her sessions were impactful. And, you know, going through the survey results, um, one of the questions is what, what would you like, uh, uh, more training in? Or what would you like to see more of in cult, her session? The cultural competency is just peppered throughout all of these responses. Um, they, uh, the other sessions were, were received really well. There was a, I call him a kid, he's twenty-two, from, I think he's from India, so he's teaching, um, about AI. And, uh, I guess he was, he was excellent. He was very, he, he didn't act like a twenty-two-year-old, you know? He was very professional and knew his stuff, and, and, and people felt that was a, a good session. There was a session on, um, E F T, which is Emotional Freedom Technique, which was received well. There was even some yoga going on, and that was, uh, people actually really liked the yoga gen, Jensen, I think taught that. So it, overall, it, they really did a good job with the, um, with the Staff Development Day. Uh, they were talking about possibly integrating the elementary and high school together. It's tricky with the semester and trimesters, but, um, they, uh, they thought that happened in two different perspectives for some of these things, you know, when you're talking about cultural competency and, um, trauma response, um, instruction. I can't remember what they called that, but, um, anyway, so they talked about possibly integrating that next time. Let's see, what else did we go over? They wanted to ask, uh, Phyllis back actually even for some more trainings in trauma-informed cultural competency, which kind of expands on what she was doing before.
That's what I went to, I went to that. It was excellent.
Yeah.
They had it. They had a trauma and resiliency. They had two educators from Warhead, Cindy Johnson and Amy Ricchio, who did, um, two-hour session on trauma-sensitive schools.
Yeah, that was another one of those, yeah, that was another one of the sessions, and what they were talking about is having her come back, because she, Phyllis expands on her content with some additional classes that she offers. Yeah, the trauma, the trauma, a session was really well-received as well, yeah.
Yeah.
From what, from what, um, the feedback says, so. Um, so as far as the money goes, there's still about eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars that hasn't been spent yet. Um, I don't know if they're anticipating, they, they didn't really know if they're anticipating any more requests. And I guess my question was like, you know, when I was on the Staff Development, uh, for several years ago, usually that money was just spent, oh, it was zeroed out, and that's kind of what, personally, what I would want to see, because you've got staff investing in their development. And, um, I just asked, well, why do you think the money's not getting spent? They said, they weren't totally sure, maybe COVID had something to do with it, but not in, in the habit of asking for trainings. Um, the substitute teacher thing is hard, feeling guilty for leaving. Um, some teachers and staff don't know that things are available, so I said, well, where are there resources for folks to, you know, find, uh, um, you know, seminars and things that they can attend for development? And, um, they said there was, um, but there wasn't a really good answer why the money wasn't spent, but, I mean, we still have some part of the year left, so, um, we'll see what happens in the next meeting or two, how much, how many more requests there are. Um, and we just had a couple of requests to approve, and that's about it for the meeting, so.
Any questions for Steve? All right, we'll move on then to subsequent meeting.
Well, good evening, beautiful, beautiful day out. Um, I had an opportunity last Friday afternoon to, and I was kind of wearing two hats for this event. Um, one as, uh, my district superintendent hat, and then the other one as a member of Modernizer's Kiwanis. Uh, but some of the McKinley classrooms wanted to express their appreciation to the Kiwanis Club for Mud Pie Park. And so it was, uh, a send-off. Um, the city is on the site this, uh, this week, uh, taking down the shelter and removing some of the other pieces of Mud Pie Park. And so, uh, just a really thoughtful gesture with a little thank you note to the Kiwanis that I will deliver to them and, uh, in appreciation for the many years of enjoyment and learning that they had, uh, at the park.
Where's it going?
The shelter, uh, will be disassembled, and then, uh, the structure will be used by the city. Um, the, there's a playground structure, uh, that I will simply say is going on a trailer and bound to parts, who knows? Well, I know, but it's bound for other locations. It will no longer be in the possession of the school district. How does that sound? Uh, there are some boulders that were gonna be removed, uh, as part of that as well, because, um, Principal Colbeck wanted more green space for the older kids to be able to run around and, uh, do their activities. So those will be put to use by the city at various parks, et cetera, as well. So I think, uh, all the components are going to be repurposed, and at least it'll be productive, and so that's, that's good. Uh, Otterbots had a competition up in Grand Forks, um, at the Alaris, uh, last, in the last week. Uh, I had the opportunity to see a demo of, um, of their machine. And it's, um, I say this every single year, but what these kids do, uh, from an engineering standpoint is just amazing. Um, this, this thing, um, moves right along, for one thing. You'd be surprised if you didn't have a chance to see the competition, how quickly this moves, uh, but it scoops right along. And then, uh, if you see those orange rings in the background, um, the machine scoops those up, and then it deposits them in various types of, um, uh, locations, and they're worth various points, depending on how complicated it is to get up there. Uh, some of the Otterbots, if you see the mechanism in the foreground, uh, that was designed, and it's got a couple of wheels that spin inside it, um, to essentially shoot the ring like a frisbee, because there was one piece that was quite high up, um, and they never got that part, uh, where they thought it was as efficient as it needed to be. But other, uh, teams were firing the, uh, the discs into targets. There's an arm aperture, uh, with this thing, that it hooks onto a bar and it can lift itself up, which gets it high enough to deposit one of those rings. So just amazing, amazing work. Many of these kids go on to study engineering, uh, in college, and what a great opportunity to, um, hone your skills and, uh, fuel the fires of those interests that they have. Uh, so they will end up going on, uh, to the Robotics Championship down in, um, in the cities. And so we want to wish them well, and, uh, certainly thank Otter Tail Power and the volunteers that help, uh, guide them in this process. But super, super cool. Uh, Ferguson Falls High School Knowledge Bowl team finished fourth and will advance to the regional competition. Uh, we had two teams compete. Uh, the other team finished tied for sixth, but lost a tiebreaker, and your top six teams advance to regionals. So good luck to them. Middle School Tri-College Math Competition, this was really good news for our, our students. Competed in the large school division. Uh, both are, uh, they're four-person teams, and, uh, both our seventh-grade team and our eighth-grade team placed first in the team competition. Uh, Lydia Ugarud placed tenth, and Jacob Warner, uh, placed third. Uh, just as a reminder, Jacob was also the winner of the Regional Spelling Bee that I talked about a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but congratulations to Jacob Warner, Saul Anderson, Max Batsla, Lucas Tool, uh, for seventh graders and the eighth graders, Jack Brun, Luke Warner, Lydia Ugarud, and Sarah Eklund. Uh, there's a couple photos of, uh, the top finishers and, uh, uh, two winning teams. Uh, the high school also competed in the Tri-College Math, and I think this just rolled off the presses this afternoon. The ninth and tenth-grade team placed third in the large school division. Top ten awards were Eric Swanson earning second place and Jacob Jenk at seventh place. And the eleventh and twelfth-grade team did not have any top-ten finishers, uh, but they had a lot of strong finishes, um, that were kind of, uh, more towards the upper middle, and that garnered them a fourth-place finish. So congratulations to all those students and their advisors. Uh, this is an update on, um, Lincoln, Phase Two. So, um, you can see that, uh, the sheet-rocking is really kind of taken off here, and it's framing the interior of the building. Uh, the classroom that you see on the right-hand side of the screen, uh, would be an east-facing classroom, uh, but you can see it's, uh, it's bright, uh, there's a lot of natural light coming into there. Uh, a few of the teachers had a chance to tour that, um, site after we finished our last Playground Committee meeting, and, uh, really, really excited about the work and the design that they were seeing, uh, how spacious, uh, the rooms and facilities are. And, uh, it was, was fun for me to just, uh, see how excited they were about, um, this project coming to fruition and the move out there. And, uh, it was, it was fun for me to just, uh, see how excited they were about, um, this project coming to fruition and the move out there, uh, this fall. Uh, this would be, um, bathroom facilities that are just off the, uh, two cafeteria areas. Uh, and part of that will also be storage that's coming in. And this is the, uh, depiction of the playground, uh, that the board will vote on, uh, later in the meeting. Um, really a cool design. Uh, the, uh, playing surface would all be, um, in rubber coating, making the equipment accessible to all students. So that's, bless you, uh, an exciting part of, um, of the whole piece coming through as well. Uh, we do have confirmation on, uh, the signed easement agreement, uh, so we'll be issuing a payment for that. Um, and if things go as planned, we expect a lot of the earth moving to begin as early as, um, as early to mid-April. So, uh, that'll be another major piece, uh, moving this project forward. Uh, so far, we still believe that it will be completed on time, so an occupancy date of July first. Uh, upcoming events, uh, we have the Scholastic Book Fair at, uh, K S S in the Media Center, uh, that's going on this week. We have kindergarten meet and greet, uh, scheduled for, uh, March twenty-second and there are two different sessions, uh, for that. Then we talked about this earlier, uh, but the yard signs for our seniors this fall, uh, there's an opportunity to order those and they look really sharp, uh, so I want to make people aware of that opportunity. Uh, and then we had a celebration of Dr. Seuss and on his birthday here recently at McKinley. And, uh, quite a lot of fun reading Cat in the Hat and, uh, one of our very own, uh, dressed up as, um, as the cat and really makes a pretty good, pretty good figure there, I would say.
Like I need to up my Grinch.
You've got competition, I will say that. Um, just a couple of notes now on the, uh, bond, the May fourteenth, uh, twenty, twenty-four bond. Some pieces about the Fergus Falls, uh, facilities, we maintain six buildings, approximately six hundred and seventy thousand square feet. Average age per square foot is forty-five years. And the last time the school built a completely new school from the ground up goes back to nineteen sixty-eight, uh, when the Fergus Falls Middle School, uh, was constructed, which is now part of the K S S complex. That was built, as I understand the history of the district, in response to the former middle school, um, burning down. And so that's, uh, why the new one was built. Uh, but that goes back a while. That's fifty-six years ago, uh, before the last completely from-the-ground-up, uh, school was built in our school district. Uh, why is the bond question important to our community? Uh, first of all, it is, um, I believe that it fits within our mission, uh, to prepare productive and engaged members of society by creating an environment, and that environment's a key word here, where all students reach their full potential. Uh, Minnesota is entering a, uh, period of the next ten years or so with a projected labor shortage. Uh, that makes the work of public education all the more important as we prepare employees and employee, employers, uh, to come out of our community. And then as we look at the, uh, lack of employees, one of the key strategies for, um, communities that will be economically viable is to attract people to the community and bring more workers to our region. And certainly having strong school systems is one of the primary, uh, things people look at, uh, when they're coming to an area and they have school-aged children. Uh, I think that dichotomy is pretty, um, you know, it's, it's pretty strong when you look at the types of work people were doing back in nineteen thirty-nine uh, versus, uh, what we're preparing our students to do now. So, um, heavy on service and heavy on, uh, farm and the agricultural industry as expected back in nineteen thirty-nine. Uh, many people worked on the family farm and then inherited it later or started farming on their own afterwards. Um, and then you see more of a typing, secretarial, stenographer-type work as well as service work. When you look at the, uh, pieces now, uh, top jobs in twenty twenty-five, I believe I got this from LinkedIn. Uh, artificial intelligence and machine learning specialists, data scientists and analysts, healthcare, cybersecurity, software developers, renewable energy technicians, environmental scientists, logistics and supply chain managers, uh, which if we weren't aware of those folks before, certainly became aware of them during the pandemic. Uh, remote and hybrid work specialists and e-commerce and digital marketing professionals. It is a different world out there now than it was in nineteen thirty-nine. I think that our vision aligns really well, really, uh, well with, um, the top's ten skills that employers are looking for. Um, not surprising from that top ten list of jobs are the heavy emphasis on analytical thinking and innovation, um, the ability to continue learning, uh, complex problem-solving, critical thinking and analysis, creativity, originality and initiative. And then under our character pieces, the leadership and social influence. Uh, we see a heavy emphasis, emphasis on technology, uh, knowledge and use. And then again, some more personal characteristics with resilience, stress, tolerance and flexibility and those higher-order thinking skills. As you compare that list to our otter portrait of a graduate, I think there is, uh, and, and this goes back three years now. But I think that it reflects, um, some careful thinking on the part of the district in terms of where the world was heading and the skills and attributes that were going to be needed to be successful. So as you look at the components of core knowledge, creative problem solver, communicator, character and contributing citizen, uh, those all align very, very strongly with, um, those skills that employers are working on today. And so with that, it's always been incumbent on us as part of our strategic planning process that we would look at our facilities and ask the very, uh, appropriate question, do our facilities support the kind of work that we're trying to do instructionally? And if they don't, uh, we need to get, upgrade them to the point where they can. I want to end tonight, uh, with a discussion or some information on the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. Uh, this has been a hot topic in our community for the past couple of weeks. Um, and I want to set the record straight on what may be some misconceptions or misinterpretations. Um, so this is what is accurate. Um, we have a relationship with the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, at the Prairie Science Learning Center. Uh, they support our Prairie Science Classroom. Uh, there is an M O U in place, uh, with Fish and Wildlife, uh, that will need to be redone this summer. It expires in June. Um, but, uh, on the staffing side, um, while it is accurate to say that U S Fish and Wildlife has seen a steady, uh, drop in their staff committed to, um, the support of the program, that is accurate. Uh, it is also accurate to say that the commitment from the Fergus Falls Public School District for the Prairie Science Classroom remains as strong and viable as it ever has. Uh, we have four teachers that teach out of four classrooms located on the, uh, backside of that site on a daily basis. Uh, they're incredibly skilled and knowledgeable and passionate about this program. And we could fill pages of testimonials, uh, from present and past students about how impactful this experience has been in their life. Even though, uh, much of this year has been spent without the presence of a naturalist on the site, um, our teachers continue to do a phenomenal job of teaching the curriculum and exposing the students to environmental education. And, uh, while it is definitely a huge plus for the program to have the naturalists from U S Fish and Wildlife on-site, uh, there are other means, uh, that we can use to augment and support the program that can be explored. I just received confirmation, uh, through an email today, uh, reassuring and reaffirming, uh, that U S Fish and Wildlife has no intention of closing the facility. Closing the facility has not been discussed. Uh, for people that are familiar with the site, uh, you would have seen a substantial capital investment on that property in the last nine months. Uh, they redid the parking lot, they redid the siding on the facilities. So certainly, um, there is an interest in maintaining and, uh, doing the upkeep on that facility. So, uh, we're still excited about our partnership. Um, there may be some creative, uh, solutions that, uh, need to take place moving forward. Uh, but there's a lot of very passionate people that support and believe in this program, uh, that will help ensure its vitality, um, today, tomorrow and into the future. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
I was reading through the Prairie Wetlands, um, information and I understand the city owns the buildings. So, um, even if Fish and Wildlife Service were to say they didn't want to participate anymore, there are still options available.
Yeah, it's a very unique agreement. Uh, U S Fish and Wildlife owns the land underneath the buildings, uh, but the city owns the buildings. Obviously federal dollars were being used to upgrade and maintain them. Uh, and then, um, the arrangement also involves Lake's Country Service Co-op as well, so, and our district.
I thought your information back to Lincoln School and the bond, um, I thought it was very compelling information what you pulled forward in regard to the types of, um, jobs and, uh, average age or square footage, et cetera, et cetera. That was nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one clarification. Um, so the junior, it was a junior high that burned down. We hadn't gone to a middle school back then and I know that because I was in seventh grade at the time, sixth grade. And so, yeah, so the high school burned down, the junior high burned down in nineteen sixty-seven. And we did split shifts because we had Roosevelt was our high school.
Oh, sure.
So the tenth through twelfth went to school from six in the morning until eleven forty-five and then the seventh through ninth grade went to school from twelve-thirty in the afternoon until five-thirty or six. And so I was the, I, I did the second year of the split shift because we still had Madison and Lincoln at that time. So we, all of our neighborhood schools were, were, uh, one through six. And so I was actually one of the first eighth grade class in this building, which was still the junior high at the time, so.
Interesting.
Hey, hey, do you remember which bond referendum failed after a school burned down and then the community still voted not to build a new school?
Which community did that?
Here. I, I remember that from some of our bond stuff in the past, so I'll have to fact-check it and see if that was accurate. You don't remember that? Okay.
Any other questions for Superintendent Drake? You've got the new logo up there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to our general consent items. We have our minutes from February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, we have our board meeting. And then we have the Treasury Report.
Yes, so bills and Treasury Report. I will start with the Treasury Report. So, um, our, uh, our, our total fund balance right now, um, when you, uh, eliminate the construction fund, sits at about just over seventeen million dollars. A year ago it was fifteen million dollars and one of the things that we'll see, uh, I think it'll be closer to what it was last year when we get through the June payroll. And we have some, uh, L T F M dollars that, that will be coming up that we haven't spent yet, so. So the, uh, fund balance is still in good shape. And as far as the bills go, uh, Natalie came in and, uh, reviewed the bills with myself and with, uh, Renee and some of the things that we looked at, um, it, almost eleven thousand dollars went through for the Bonjour Travel Adventures to Europe for the European trip. We had, um, a number of, uh, a number of things through Amazon and it's, uh, nice to see, thanks to Renee's work, that, uh, a lot of zeros on Amazon shipping charges, so that's always good. Um, we had to spend twenty-five hundred dollars. We had an eyewash station that froze in the garage and so that was, had to be replaced. We had to pull some new intercom cables, uh, in a couple of spots in the building here, so that was three thousand dollars for electrician. Um, here's one. I'm in the five-four-four foundation committee and, uh, every year we provide money through the front, we, we are provided money from the foundation for wish lists. And if we don't use the money, we have to give it back. And unfortunately, we had to refund the foundation just over four thousand dollars for wish lists that didn't get used, so. So, uh, that's something we'll have to try and focus on with our, with one of our upcoming meetings at the foundation to see how we can, uh, avoid having money come back to the foundation. Um, a ukulele for sixteen hundred dollars, that's, uh, that went through with John Deere Financial. We had some mower, mower repairs, so looking forward to doing some more.
One ukulele for sixteen?
I think it was over, I think it was a pass-through for Oil V. It was, uh,
Right, Title IV.
Title IV.
It was a bunch of ukuleles.
Oh, was it a bunch?
I imagine. That's a really expensive ukulele.
I told, I said that too. I think it would have to play itself.
Okay.
The, uh, we had to buy a new postage machine. We were required to buy a new postage machine by the post office and so hopefully we can make use of that for the next five years. And that was three thousand, I believe. And and we had five thousand dollars in salting. So this is a weird year. We had more, I think, I believe we've had more money spent on salting this year than we did in Snowplow, which has got to be a first. So looking at the, the thirteen hundred dollars, uh, one point two million dollars or so that we spent, um, one point two million in general fund, the bulk of which was payroll, um, and there was no construction bills this month, so that was, uh, that, that fund was zero. And, uh, the balance of it was community service and food service. But when you add up payroll and, and the bus company and, uh, a couple of other large ones, that's, that's kind of where the money went this month, so. Nothing too much out of the ordinary. No dog sleds this month. Any questions?
Any questions for thirty?
All right, thank you, Renee.
Thanks. Um, then we'll move first down to give me a question.
Good evening, everyone. We have a number of items here on their personnel. Um, certified staff hires, Barbara King, an overload of her, and she's a special ed teacher. Um, and then along, I'll just go with the other IQ, um, Alexandra Howe, um, or Alex Howe, uh, IQ, language arts, long-term substitute. He's been subbing during second trimester? Nope, let me see. Yes, trimester. Wait, IQs have quarters, don't they?
Yes.
Have to get that straight in my head. Um, so he's been, he's been subbing for third quarter and now he'll be subbing for fourth quarter. Um, as a long-term substitute in language arts. And then Vanessa Jacobson, just a contract increase due to student enrollment need. Um, so it just increased, uh, it's one class for the rest of the school year. It's a point one-six-six-seven, but, um, spread over the, the, um, length of time, it lessens that over the percentage. She currently is working half-time at a point five, so we're adding a zero-four-five-six to her contract. Um, and then going back, Matt Johnson, middle school dean of students, that's effective for the new school year. And then Carrie Trupka, a special ed teacher, um, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Support staff hires, Leah Starzl, interpreter, um, and that's again effective for our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jana Johnson, head secretary at Lincoln School, um, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then Ethan Anderson, uh, head custodian at our, at Roosevelt. Um, our last board meeting, we had the, um, adjournment of Dan Ross and Ethan will be the replacement. Ethan has been working in our district for almost two years now as a substitute. He's such a great job, so, um, he will become the head custodian over at Roosevelt, um, effective today. And then support staff resignation, um, Sean Anderson, who is the head custodian here at Kennedy Secondary School. His last, uh, work day will be this Friday, so I recommend those for board approval.
Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. So it's our approved. We don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business and we'll move, um, can I get a motion to approve our new district logo that was presented to us last month?
So moved.
In a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
When, um, uh, Derek Abrams was here, he suggested we consider whether or not we would, um, allow the use of the logo only by permission from the school. And, um, I don't know if that is incumbent upon us to address that in this, um, motion. I mean, if motion's to adopt the new logo, then if we don't, uh, discuss use only by permission and include it now, then we should probably do that, make that clear. I don't know. Or does anyone else?
Could be, maybe amend the motion to approve the logo, like this is what we want, but then add, with the intention of creating a policy of management of that logo or like, you know what I mean? Is there a separate policy that needs to be created for how that gets used in the community and all that? Is that kind of what you're going?
That's what I'm going for, but I wasn't thinking it was as complicated as adopting a policy, either we do or we don't. But what he, he had suggested as a board, we discuss that and we haven't, um, had a, I don't recall, we've had no work session or conversation about that. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that forward and if we're, the motion right now is just to approve the logo, but maybe we could.
He did talk about wanting to go through the process to have it trademarked.
Yeah.
Which last month he wasn't sure, but now I think he's feeling like that's favored.
Right, so that's, that, that was the discussion you wanted the board to have, because I would believe that's our, that's our, um, decision-making round, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I bet I think we should talk about it before we include that in anything, so maybe just approve the logo, but.
The design of the logo, is it?
Yeah, the design of the logo, okay.
So we're approving the new design.
The logo design, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, got it. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The design of the logo is approved. And then we'll move on to the purchase of a modular concession unit. And this is an up-to-code option that will serve as our concession stand down by the football field.
That's correct. The current facilities down there will no longer comply with Department of Health standards. And so this unit is an option that would be compliant, and it offers some ability for customization as well, in terms of what we want in the interior. It will fit in an area just to the right of the home grandstand, where we have ready access to electricity and water as well, and would seem to be a pretty good solution for a problem that was not easy to solve. We had talked about this about a year ago in looking at other possibilities, but because of the topography in the back of the school, it's difficult to find a flat spot that's a good location. And so the old concession stand still could be used to serve some kinds of foods, and then it could potentially be used to sell otter apparel as well, so.
That's a good idea.
Prepackaged foods, like candy bars, chips, just can't be doing hot dogs and hot habits and things like that.
The revenue still goes to the booster clubs from this, is that?
Yeah, it's split among them, as I understand it, as they supply the workers for it.
All right, can I get a motion to approve that purchase?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That purchase is approved. And then we have the revisions and updates to the following school board policies that can see mentioned in her report 206A, 410, 413, 416, 506, 507, and 620. Need a motion to approve those revisions?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any more discussion on that?
On the public engagement rules, I knew that we were kind of not 100% in agreement when the public hours should be taking place, like some of us wanted it to be taken between, I don't know, before the regular board meeting, right? And then others, didn't, are we all good with it kind of remaining the same between with the three-minute time limit and the 10-minute total?
Can it be after the board meeting, but before the work session?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those updates are approved. Then we have a proposal for the Lincoln School playground equipment. Can I get a motion to approve that proposal?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
So on this one, I know we had talked about going out for bid on this. Because I know Landscape Structures is the, is the company that built Magnuson Park, and I know that's one that Sarah Duffy wanted. With that, did we get other bids, and these guys were the best, or how did that?
Yes, there were, I think there were three other bids.
I guess I missed that amongst all the other bids.
There was three other bids.
Three other bids, variation in pricing. This was the only one that had a completely poured rubber surface. The other ones had wood fiber, or a combination of wood fiber and poured rubber. But in looking at the overall surface and the equipment, this was the optimum, or this was the choice that people selected. Not the cheapest, but it was.
And Dakota, just for your clarification, Dakota Playgrounds ended up being what was recommended by Sarah and the committee?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I remember working with them on that Magnuson Park committee. And I love Landscape Structures, they're a Minnesota-based company, their playground, they're awesome, so.
I have a question, you mentioned that that surface is, makes the park accessible, but are there also playground components that are accessible too?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I couldn't exactly tell from the picture. It's not one swing, that's definitely.
One swing is definitely designed for handicap use. And then the other, the other components, those are going to probably vary in terms of accessibility based on what the limitations might be. But certainly, I would say there would be, I would think, we see there would be multiple options for people.
I want to say on the right side, like maybe one of those seesaws and then that little weight, that thing?
This piece.
And this one is considered accessible too because they have an access right on the ground as well, right? The hedron, or I think that's what that's called, but am I right on that, do you remember, from the Magnuson Park?
I'd have to look at it a little closer. The team thought really good about the rubber surface too, from just a management standpoint. If a parent's out there with a couple of students and needs to assist, they're able to get around versus having to try to push a wheelchair through mulch or anything, what have you.
Right, but that's, that's great. I'm just asking, what are the components of this that a child in a wheelchair can get on? Is there like a ramp so they can kind of go up into this structure?
No, I don't think it's that complex.
Are there playground, is there much playground equipment if that is?
Yeah.
Or this, like this swing, you're saying that that's for a student with a disability, but. I mean, I'm thinking there must be swings where you can get, you can have your wheelchair on there. That one doesn't look like that to me.
Someone will have to look into this.
You know, that's more of a, like a platform that swings.
Of the presentations or explanations of the quotes that we saw, there was only one vendor that showed us a demonstration of a slide where basically the student could be completely self-sufficient in how they accessed it and used it. So they were not dependent on any type of aid or anything. That piece of equipment, I don't recall being incorporated in the proposal they gave to us, that was not this vendor.
Renee, what's the current cost proposal that we're just going to vote on?
This particular one is 364-088. It wasn't the cheapest one, but it's also not the most expensive one.
There was one other one that was really a lot higher, there was one other one that was a lot lower, and there was another one that was about the same as this. The biggest difference is 7,200 square feet of poured rubber. The cheapest one was all wood fiber. One of the things that we've learned is, like at NP Park, they have a lot of wood fiber. We're hoping to save on some cleaning bills because the library has got lots of wood fibers that are dragged in all the time. It's hard to clean out of the carpet. The other one had 560 square feet of poured rubber, again compared to 7,200 square feet. The fourth one, which was comparable in price, had 1,600-plus square feet of rubber surfacing with a balance in wood fiber. So all three of the competing ones had the wood fiber as part of it, this one is all the poured rubber. I think we talked about going with black because it will be on the northeast side of the building, so.
Or a darker color anyway.
Right, versus having, if we're on the south side where it's hit by the sun all the time, then you would want to go with a lighter color.
And the equipment has a lifetime warranty, which is important. I believe this is the only company that had that, I guess, I think.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. So the next one, we're going to move into a closed session permitted by Minnesota Statute 13.03 to discuss negotiation strategies related to the district's negotiation to the Fergus Falls municipal association. Can I get a motion to close the session? In a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Your session is closed.